Whereas the Acapulco County School Board has been giving a closed meeting on this debate pursuant to the Urban Record Book, in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Improvement Compensation Act, and whereas Section 2.1-37, 71b, the code of Virginia requires certification by this school board, such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore being resolved, the Acapulco County School Board hereby certifies that these events at each member's knowledge, one only public business matters will ultimately exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion, of which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Motion second to certify the closed meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Before we stand for the pledge, I would just like for us all to remember, we had a, we lost a student at Kegaton, very excited, standing beside Ron Johnson, so I'll just ask you all to keep this family in your thoughts and prayers. We'll now stand for the pledge and remain standing for a little bit of silence. Pledge of the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
Mr. Taylor?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Ms. Handy?
Here.
Mr. Whipper?
Here.
Ms. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. White? Or Mr. White, I don't know. Ms. Turner?
There.
Dr. Miller?
Present.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the last two meetings?
Yes ma'am. I move that we approve the minutes from the 10:21 and 10:28 through 25 meetings, as presented.
Motion is second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion for the vouchers?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the vouchers as presented.
Motion is second to approve vouchers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion for the personnel list?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel list as amended. Is that right?
Motion is second to approve the personnel list as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
One master clerk.
Mr. Spideau?
I approve, yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, approved.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Handy?
Abstained.
Mr. Whipper?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Good evening, son. I don't confirm that. Now, there we go. I would like to call up Ms. Andy Kay Tyler. Tyler has been a teacher in this district for 29 years, 14 of those at Chinkatik High School, and she is an integral part of our school. She's been teaching geometry and Algebra II for many, many years. And anytime I need anything, I go to Andy Kay. "Andy Kay, can you do this for me?" She said she'd be happy to. She is always there to do anything I ask. She has done the Saturday School. Last year, she did just about every single one, I think. So she goes above and beyond for our students. She's doing after-school tutoring for our students who need some extra help. And I know last year, we had a student that was getting a little bit behind, and she gave up her planning time to meet with that student to help them to get them caught up. So, you know, she's an integral part of our school, and she could take with me the same without her. So, Andy Kay, we want to thank you so much for everything that you do. Appreciate you guys.
We would like to take the opportunity to recognize Chinkatik Elementary and their VPI program, as well as Ms. Ashley Powers, for being recognized as a school. The VQV5, which is the Virginia Quality First-to-Five Program, is what measures all preschool programs within the state that are publicly funded. Of those 13,000 states, only about 100, or 13,000 programs, only about 1/100 of them are recognized each year as exceeding expectations and being on the Excellence Honor Roll. This is a testimony to Ms. Ashley Powers and the program at Chinkatik Elementary. We also have Ms. King joining us as well. Congratulations, Chinkatik and Ms. Powers.
Thank you. Very important, and I'm glad that they're starting to work again.
Please, sir, update from the Disputing Committee.
There it is. The chair, excuse me. The Disputing Committee met on Monday, November the 10th. We heard four cases. All of those cases were heard and action was rendered there. Ms. Jordan has contacted all of the parties who were involved in all of the follow-up actions are being implemented in alignment with the recommendations and institutional policy. Thank you.
Ms. Tyler?
I'm sorry, I'm just checking my hearing. There were four cases, not one?
There were four cases.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there a report through the Finance Committee?
Yes ma'am. Finance Committee met last Tuesday, and Dr. Miller, Ms. O'Leary, myself, and Mr. Booker, the President, and Dr. Johnson, and I did it remotely. And we went over, based on all the staff reports, adding expenditures, and everything at this time was in order. And we also talked about the capital improvement plan extensively, and certainly, I believe, we'll be presenting that a little later here and discuss.
Thank you. Policy Committee.
Policy Committee met on 11/12, and we put it by last Wednesday. The President was Ms. Bowman, Ms. Handy, and I. I care, but I'm unable to tell you, so Ms. Handy fills it for him. Thank you, Ms. Handy. We had two policies. We all were agreement, and then they were up for approval.
Thank you. Human Resources Update.
The Human Resources Update is attached. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to Dr. Garrison.
Anyone have any questions about the board or Dr. Garrison? We've made a good talk about Dr. Garrison, we continue discussing. ECSV, ESCSV, Annual Reports.
Can I actually go back to the Finance Committee just for a minute? I want to have Ms. Emily give an update on the capital improvement, um, sorry, carryover projects that we have going on, progress on those.
Okay.
At our Finance Committee meeting, we had discussed a carry-forward projects, and the committee felt that it would be good to bring this before the whole board. So I have attached a slide thing that we did not go over the night of the report, so this is new to the Finance Committee. And I really wanted to go on the last page. The other stuff is just the changes and the summary. And I just listed every project. Now, every project that you see on this page was what you all approved last spring. So I'm trying to show the status of the project, those that are completed, those that are in progress, and those that have not yet been started. So we will be doing more work on carry-forward once our FY '25 audit is complete and the figures are updated. Then we will come back to this board, and we will actually do numbers of what went over or under, and may remain or be short, and then appropriate the additional, carry-forward. But this is just to give the board an idea of the status of where we are as to what we've completed, what we're working on, and what hasn't started yet.
Thank you. Very clear and concise.
Thank you.
ESCSV, Annual Report.
That is an annual report that they provide for us, and it's just there for information only, there's no action that will be taken on that.
Capital Improvement Plan?
The Capital Improvement Plan is the plan that will go into effect for '27 through '31. This will be up for approval at the December meeting. This is a very extensive document that Mr. Bennett has worked on, including pictures and notes on all of the projects that are in there. Any questions, you can, feel free to reach out to myself or Mr. Bennett.
Technology Plan?
The Technology Plan is for '25 through '30. Again, that's an extensive plan that outlines the goals of the Technology Department over the next five years. If you have any questions, that will be up for approval in the December meeting. Any questions, feel free to reach out to myself or our Technology Department.
Overnight Field Trip Requests?
These are the Beta Field Trip requests. The requests are attached there, they'll be up for approval in December. Per policy, any overnight trips have to be approved by the board.
Is there a, is there a hook on mine?
Yes, the trip's February.
Early Release on Exam Days?
Yes, so we had the Calendar Committee met to go over the academic calendars for the '26, '27 school year, the next agenda items. During that time, we talked a little bit about the calendar for this year as well as next year. And the committee and myself feel like on exam days for, so we would like to bring this year's calendar up for revision, we would like to, on the exam days, have those be early outs. The reason is that our students take two exams, and for the rest of the day, that instruction for those courses is completely over. There's no new course to teach, there's no assignments that students need to complete. And so to cut down on any discipline, or just the kind of watching students while they hang out at school, for lack of a better term, we would like to make those early release days.
What about New Year's Eve hours?
All right, here you will see the two drafts of the calendar, Calendar A, Calendar B. Calendar A starts after Labor Day, Calendar B starts four days before Labor Day, five days if you count Friday, before Labor Day. Then below that, you will see the results of the staff survey. We have right at 459 people respond to the survey. About 60% preferred Calendar B, 40% Calendar A. So 20% differential in there of staff that wanted to start before Labor Day. These calendars, and the one that starts before Labor Day, I know there was some current concern about buses and student drivers in the traffic of the holiday weekend. So the committee opted to take that Friday and have that Friday off, so we wouldn't have buses or student drivers on the roads during that time. They would leave school on Thursday and not come back until the following Tuesday. These calendars were developed by the Calendar Committee, even down to which days they preferred for breaks. We gave them kind of total reign over the calendar, and they picked which ones to bring forward for the survey and for consideration for next year. So I am just simply presenting the calendars that they developed and the survey options for the board.
Okay, does it must be reversed? The colors don't match the options, and then the language at the bottom doesn't match the question.
We, the language at the bottom, we'll fix that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure. Yes, ma'am. I might, um, if you understand.
Go ahead.
So, I don't want anybody to be insulted by what I'm going to say, but I'm going to say what I'm going to say because that's what I think, that's what I believe. So first, I want to thank the committee, because I know it takes time to look at all this. As a person who's been on the board a number of years, it's not uncommon to receive more than one proposed calendar. In fact, I for one, I appreciate it, because it gives me the options, and only that rationale is provided. I am, I put in my notes, but I'm not using them, because I want to really speak from my heart and from my head. I'm actually surprised, and a little frustrated, at receiving a proposed calendar that includes starting before Labor Day. And I can say that with confidence, because of the amount of feedback that we got, I think it was like a year and a half, maybe two years ago, when that concept was presented. I have my own individual feelings about the pros and the cons of starting before Labor Day, but I don't make decisions just based solely on my own thoughts. I like to get comments and consider them. So that's my preface, and I actually, I'm not asking anybody to tell me anything now, but I would actually like to know where you came from, to start before Labor Day. But what I want to just put into the atmosphere, I mean, very intentional, some of the inquiries that I've made, based on what people have been saying to me about even thinking about starting before Labor Day, are based on the fact that Labor Day is late this year. Well, I did a little bit of research, and 2020, Labor Day was on September 7th. 2015, Labor Day was on September 7th. 2010, Labor Day was on September 6th. 20, 2009, Labor Day was on September 7th. So based on the data, this is not, by far, is not the first year in the history of Acapulco County Public Schools that Labor Day falls late. And I would invite, don't call it late, but I would invite anybody to help me to understand what is so different about Labor Day falling late this year, that it would require us to change when we start school. And I let that rest.
I do want to ask, I mean, I appreciate the fact that we asked the staff for the
survey, but are we going to ask the parents as well? Are we going to do a survey for them?
So if you would like me to do a survey for the parents, I can. The, what I had said is that the public comment is the place for parents in the community to voice their opinions, but we can put out a parent survey if the board wishes.
And this, the Calendar Committee that came up with these calendar options, that was made up of?
That was made up of teachers and administrators from each school.
Thank you. Any other?
I'd like to continue, I mean, I personally, I mean, I know we're bored, it's not about my opinion, but I would like to see the parent survey.
Madam Chair, would we be asked, like, to know where to keep, to have a survey for the parents?
Second.
Yeah, we can send that out tomorrow.
If there, if, I would just say this, in the past, we've done these surveys, and then the parents will come in and say, "I filled it out eight times." So if we could just, um, yeah, there's a motion, second, this is the discussion.
Why didn't you call for a question? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
If we could just, some way, ensure that the parents responded eight times. So there's a motion, second, for a parent survey. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then, okay, the clerk take, take the vote.
Mr. Spideau?
Yes, to have a parent survey.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, for a parent survey.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Handy?
Yes.
Mr. Whipper?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Ms. Turner?
No.
Okay, the week, right now, we have the school board meeting, the week that we get out of school for Christmas break, and the committee meetings are the week before that, that is a extremely busy week. So we, I would like to propose that we move all of the dates up one week. So the school board meeting would be the week before that, and the committees would be the week of the first, second, third. And we will ask for action on this, under the action items, so that we can make that decision.
Is there any discussion about this?
Attached there, you will see that we have done the chronic absenteeism to date, and you also have the Division Benchmark Pass Rates from the first nine weeks benchmark on the, and that's broken down by school and by subject. So that is there for the public as well as the board. If there's any questions, feel free to reach out to myself or Dr. Abey.
Do students take these benchmarks to end of October?
They took it at the end of the first nine weeks.
Any questions about that score?
All righty. I'm sorry, I'm having technical difficulties with my computer, so I am going to get off my phone. We had a strategic planning committee on October 23rd, and we have, we broke into subgroups, those subgroups are meeting, and we will come back together for our next meeting on January 15th. We had a Budget Advisory Committee on October 29th. We are sending out budget requests tomorrow. We'll get those budget requests back, and we will have a next Budget Advisory Committee on December 11th. Had a Superintendent Advisory Committee November 3rd, we will have the next meeting for that on February 15th. One of the questions that we have asked is that, one of the questions that I asked of the committee is, now that we have the volunteer policy such as it is, knowing that there's a shortage of staffed work, that we would think about how we could best utilize some of those volunteers for opportunities in our school. So the committee is looking at that and seeing where we can get people to support the schools and help us out. So we'll be discussing that in February. I attended the VAS Conference, and they talked about, of course, the elections and the upcoming budget. They seem to think that that will be fairly favorable. We had all of the CSSP meetings for all schools, to review the benchmark data for their schools, and talk about any adjustments that they're making to instruction or processes based on that data, so those were good conversations. Of course, we're going to the VSBA Convention tomorrow, and so looking forward to that. And then, just wanted to make people aware that the service for our second grade student passed away will be Saturday, November 22nd, 1 o'clock, at Arcadia Middle School.
Thank you. Any questions?
One last thing, the video we did, meet, the new cut scores will not go into effect this year, this is a zero year. They will be phased in over a four-year timeframe, and that will start next year.
Okay. Action items, Policy Committee. Is there a motion for the policies?
Madam Chair, would we approve the policies as presented?
Start them.
Motion is second to approve the policies as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Giften Advisory Committee. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, would we approve the, the Honorary Committee members as presented?
Thank you. Motion is second to approve the Giften Advisory Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The December meeting change date.
Madam Chair, would we move to approve the December meeting dates as presented?
Motion is second to change the December meeting dates, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And Mr. Neal, do you want to make a motion for your action item?
Yeah, I make a motion that the Judgment Committee moves every county board chair for, for, for.
Going forward?
Going forward, definitely.
Second.
Motion is second to move the meeting place of the Disputing Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. School board members. Mr. Spideau?
Just glad to be here, helping see.
Dr. Johnson?
Few. First, I want to say to administrators, teachers, and staff, I'm not the person on the board, but I do hope that our administrators, our teachers, and staff know that they are appreciated, no matter what we go through in ACPS. I know, I for one, I'm proud of the fact that you all keep showing up, and that you give what I think is your all, whatever that is, on any particular day. And this is in my notes, ma'am, I'm going to read it, because I think it's important for each of us to remember our why, that we do what we do for the students. I hope that occurred to somebody. Second, I want to say that I did attend the November County Audit Committee meeting, and I sent meeting highlights via email. All the board members should have them, some are blind CCs, but you should have them, let it up, you done. I want to thank Ms. O'Leary and her team, and Dr. Miller, for working so diligently toward trying to meet the fiscal year '22, '25 audit requirements, towards hopefully having a time to record. Third, I just happened to be on Chinkatik Audit Room for medical reasons, the day of the bomb, perhaps, and this is just my one observation. I went to the Chinkatik Combined School, and I just hung out, and on this, you know, the public side of the fence, and, you know, just tried to keep the staff, teachers who came over, and the parents that were on the other, and other relatives and concerned people, just trying to keep people calm. I did all for the help, I'm just saying, you know, some of the people, as we were starting, as they were starting to dismiss, but nobody needed my help. So I just observed, and my observation was nothing but professionalism and calm. I haven't had any negative feedback, I wanted to say thanks. I want to extend sympathy and concern to the family and friends of the student that's been mentioned, and I just want to say, because these are my comments, I have a commitment out of town, otherwise I would just be there in the background for moral support, and I'm a person of prayer. Again, my comments, you don't have to believe the way that I do, but I will continue to pray for comfort for all who are mourning. I'm traveling, it's been mentioned to the Virginia School Board Association Conference tomorrow, and I did my best to try to select workshops that I think, that maybe nobody else would go to, so that we get a lot of perspective on things. And this is the last thing, it's my opinion, I think it's a shame, and I choose my words intentionally, how much back and forth it took among us as a board. intentionally, how much back and forth it took among us as a Board to help ensure that public comments got back up on the agenda. Policy BBAP dash R is our Code of Ethics for the School Board, is for the School Board members, and item number fourteen in that policy says that, I'll paraphrase in the interest of time because other people have to speak, that whether I agree with the decision or not, that I'm, you know, going to get on board with it, it's part of our code of ethics. And so I, I surely hope that no one person, you know, not agreeing with the decision to put the public comments up there and keep them there. You know, it's a decision that was made by the Board. I know that the original motion, you know, might have been slightly different because we had that little pause in there to the, it might be a little different than the actual motion, but I think the consensus that I've seen among us as Board members in the last few days is that public comments stays at the top for the foreseeable future. And I wanted to publicly thank Mr. Whipper for making the motion, making the, that's it.
I just want to thank everybody, you know, who came out tonight. It is very important that when we are here to do our job, what we do affects all of you and affects your children. So we're happy to have you here all the time. I did want to say congratulations, I know where is Ms. Linton. We work together at Marion Smith, but congratulations to you. Thank you to Danielle for perfect notes. I'm so able to read from them and say, oh, that's the same thing I forget, so thank you for that. And I also, and I don't, I don't know how to do this, but I'm impressed by the idea. I would like to suggest maybe that Acuimat County had its own technical high school, right? And I've been thinking about this for a while, and whenever I, the students come before us and they've gone to Skills USA and they've won all these awards and everything, I often wonder how their movement through the school throughout the day to go and get on the bus and go to another school adversely affects not only them, but also causes a distraction within the school building that they're leaving from. So I don't know how to go about proposing it, writing a memo for it, getting the research and stuff done on how much it would cost, but that is something that I personally would like to see before I leave the Board in two years, that Acuimat County, if the building is not, that we have seriously considered building one. Thank you.
Oh, good. I just want to remind everybody about those legislative proposals, let Malcolm know which way you might begin with that, and that just everybody, I think, keep this, Zion Johnson's family in their, in your thoughts and prayers, that's all.
First of all, I'd like to dito what Ms. Handy was saying, I think that they did, in a way that we're, we're committed that, I appreciate that Malcolm's going so that I don't have to be adopted for that. But also wanted to say, I had the opportunity to go to the, you know, man's memorial that KAKA had, and I know the family were very appreciative, and it was a nice, small memorial, but it was just good to see that we, as a division, but more so the teachers and the staff that came out, and it was just a good thing, and I really, truly appreciate Ms. Farrell doing that. Thank you. And then also, I appreciate all the ones that reached out to me about the calendar, and I still look forward to hearing some more information to help me decide on where and how I can put it. So please reach out and please do the survey. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank everyone that attends tonight's meeting, and also the Board of the Cipons. Bless them, and please email me or text me your answers to the questions, there's only three, and I gave you all the page numbers and the PDF, so just let them know by tomorrow, what, what about tomorrow. Also, I have a little information I want to read to all, it's going to be a little bit, all right? I also want to make it clear that the Chair does not speak for me when it comes to decision making. Too often, decisions are made on my behalf without my knowledge or input. We have nine members on this Board, and each of us has their voice. The Chair should only speak for the Board when we have discussed an issue together and reached a consensus. Recently, this has not been the case. Decisions are being made without Board approval, and Board members are learning about this change only after they have already been implemented. I would like to know, under what authority the Chair contacts employees directly outside of the Superintendent without consulting the Board? Additionally, I am aware of call, of the call you made to the Food Service Coordinator instructing him to stop serving food at meetings. This is concerning, especially since it was the Chair who originally suggested.
That's not true.
Ma'am, I, you gave your time to speak, I'm.
You're not telling the truth.
Let me finish, and then you can speak. Uh, section on Gibson dip. Those that have enjoyed by everyone, including the Chair, stop laughing, your time to speak was already given. Until a vote did not go her way, it appears, it appears decisions are being changed, your own library, based on personal feelings rather than Board consensus. The Chair repeatedly says, we must watch the budget, yet many expenses have been incurred because of her decisions, not the Board's. These choices are later described as if they were made collectively, when in fact they are, were not. In my opinion, the pattern of this behavior is having harmed to the Board's ability to function effectively on behalf of the students of Acuimat County Public Schools. This position should not be used to target or solid those who disagree with your decision. For these reasons, I believe it would be best interest of the Board and the community for the Chair to step down so we can return conducted business responsibilities and coabulary work at Acuimat County Public Schools. Thank you.
So I, I have to address this.
Go ahead.
I, I would just say, I don't know if you know, but we cannot eat federally subsidized food that is intended for the children, that is, that is given to us at a discounted rate. We should not be eating that. That's why the teachers don't eat it, that's why the teachers can't get it for free. We're not feeding the teachers for free, we shouldn't be eating.
If you want to.
Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish, don't let me finish, let me finish. Additionally, I don't know if you realize, Food Service has their own budget, and they operate on a very slim margin, and I don't want us, as Board members, to be dipping in to their, with a slim profit margin that they are trying to make. Now, I believe Dr. Miller has taken care of it, and it's, she's going to be reimbursing Food Services for our food, but it's, I, I don't want, and I don't want us to have anything that the teachers can't have. They are, should get whatever they can get, and we should not be eating the crap the teachers can't eat for free.
I'd say, you say, I would like.
Mr. Whipper, do you have anything to say?
I'm like.
Mr. Whipper, do you have anything?
I have a question, I do have a question.
No, we're, this is School Board Member Comments, it's not.
Well, you, you responded to Malcolm, so why?
It's because he made false accusations.
But the whole point I want to make, hey you, is that we've been doing this for at least three, four, or five years, and now all of a sudden, since the last meeting, it has become a problem, my husband a problem there.
We have not been doing it, it started, I asked Dr. Hall to provide light refreshments like last, like a year ago, a year and a half ago, it was, we have not been doing this for years, we used to not even have water available to us. Mr. Whipper, do you have anything?
Madam Chair, I think the, the issue for me is, we are a non-member Board, and that is a decision for the Board, not for one person, whether we have food or not.
Like, I'm, I.
I, I, I don't need to give a feedback on, on what I just said, thank you.
I, I'm.
I don't need to start that off, so.
Mr. Whipper? No? Just admit, be a lot of the Board. Yeah, I'll be, she don't have to eat.
I would just like to say, uh, thanks to everybody coming tonight. Ms. Handy attended the first C Act meeting on November third at Arcadia Middle School with Director Anis. We appointed the Chair, the Vice Chair, the Secretary, all the parent representatives showed up, it was actually a good turnout for once, and we encouraged everybody to come out who has children with special needs, and it's like this year, a big year, and there's something. Thank you.
I don't know what more to say. Thank you, everybody, for coming with the executive staff again, I know you guys are forced to be here, but thank you, just the same, I appreciate seeing everybody. Teacher of the Year, congratulations, congratulations on your pre-K program, that's fantastic accomplishment.
Is there a motion to the Chair?
Madam Chair, please.